Gene, did Denise give the haulers a heads up that we're not doing this thing today? Okay. Because I saw Richard press out there. Richard's there, is there. Back on, there we go.
of October 29th. I received a text message from a member of the audience asking if I was running late. I said absolutely not, that clock is wrong. I go by satellite time and it is promptly nine o'clock, so we will begin the meeting as scheduled. So, good morning and thank you for joining us. We will begin today's meeting by standing for Pledge of Allegiance followed by the Moment of Silence. And we will be led today by Supervisor Eve Worthley.
Thank you. Ready, salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will begin with item number one on today's agenda. That's to present a proclamation to declare October 29th, 2013, as Daughters of the Nile Day in Tulare County. And for that, I will turn it over to the Chief Daughter of the Nile, Mr. Mike Ennis.
Thank you very much. I've got three granddaughters, so I guess I am appropriate for that. Here today is Jerry Rao from Porterville, and she's this year's queen, or better known as Presiding Officer. She will present, she wants to say a few words, and then I will present a proclamation to her. Would that be fine, Jerry? Or do you want me to present it and then say a few words?
It doesn't matter.
Okay, well, come on, come on around and we'll, I'll go ahead and present it. Okay. This proclamation is declaring October 29th, 2013, as Daughters of the Nile Day in Tulare County. Daughters of the Nile organized in Seattle, Washington in 1913 as an international fraternal organization for women eighteen years and older who are related by birth or marriage to a Shriner, master mason, or daughter of the Nile, are a majority member of good standing of the Masonic-related organization for girls. As a kid growing up, it was Job's Daughters, I believe, they called it, organization. There are one hundred and forty-three subordinate temples of Daughters of the Nile, one hundred and thirty-two in the United States, eleven in Canada, with memberships to exceed twenty-five thousand. Daughters of the Nile was founded for character building among women, social interaction, and service to others. These ideas led to their work for the Special Children Shriner's Hospital. Daughters of the Nile adopted Shriner's Hospital for Children as their sole philanthropy in 1925 and has given over fifty million dollars thus far through the Supreme Temple, Daughters of the Nile Foundation, and Canadian Foundation. Members of Daughters of the Nile share a special bond of fellowship with each other. There is pride in their efforts towards supporting the great philanthropy of the Shriner's Hospital. Members volunteer at the hospital and host parties for children. Some members also sew garments, donate toys, games, books, and other items to Shriner's Hospital for Children. 2013 will mark a hundredth year anniversary and the continuing pledge to make a difference as a society of women who care enough to extend themselves beyond the limits of their own personal world to assist the world's greatest philanthropy, the Shriner's Hospital. So now therefore be it resolved that the Tulare County Board of Supervisors does declare October 29th, 2013, as Daughters of the Nile Day in Tulare County and honor the Daughters of the Nile on their hundredth anniversary. Signed by Alan Ashida, Pete Vanderpool, Philip Cox, Stephen Worthley, and Mike Ennis. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you so much. This means so much to our organization. We spend many hours, lots of money, to help the children in the Shriner's Hospitals. There is no charge to any child until the age of eighteen. They're eligible for any services. So if you know of a child who does need help, please get in touch with a mason, a Shriner, or a member of Daughters of the Nile. We are out there. We're really there, and we really do want to help. But it's a hundred, a hundred years of supporting the hospitals for children, and it does mean so much to all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you very much, and this is an action item. I'll look to grandmother of the Nile, Mr. Ennis, to make the presentation.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Supervisor Ennis, a second by Supervisor Worthley. Please vote. Motion passes unanimously, four to zero, and with Supervisor Ashida not voting because he is not in attendance at today's meeting. Supervisor Cox?
If I can have liberty just to say a couple of quick words. Not only are the services there free, but they're some of the best hospitals in the world. We have a granddaughter next month who'll be having a surgery there, where we were told this is about the only place where they can do the surgery and do it properly and have a wonderful outcome. So thank you for all that you do. It means a lot to us that have family members.
That's great. Any other comments? All right, thank you very much, and please continue the good work that you do do, because as you can see, it makes a difference for a lot of people. All right, we will now move on to item number two. That is present a proclamation honoring of Virginia Almeida as the recipient of the Save the Children National Child Service Award. Virginia Almeida was honored on October 1st at the Save the Children Benefit Gala in New York City. She was awarded the National Child Service Award for her work with the Early Steps to School Success Program. Also honored were Save the Children Ambassador Jennifer Gardner and former Secretary of State Hillary Clinton. So this is a really big deal, and we're lucky to have our local celebrity here with us. So if Virginia would like to join me here in the well, I'd like to present this proclamation to her. All right, so it's with great pride that I stand here before you to present to you this proclamation from the Board of Supervisors honoring you for your tremendous achievement and representing Tulare County so well. This proclamation is honoring Virginia Almeida as the recipient of the Save the Children National Child Service Award, where as founded in 1919, the philanthropic mission of the Save the Children is championing causes that advocate women and children. It gives children in the United States and around the world what every child deserves, a healthy start, the opportunity to learn and care when disaster strikes. And whereas Calvin Klein, Inc., presented the first Save the Children Benefit Gala on October 1st, 2014, or 2013, in New York City, where first, where five newly created awards were bestowed. And whereas Virginia Almeida received the National Child Service Award for her work with Early Steps to School Success Program in Tipton, California, go Tipton, where she, where she goes home, goes into homes and works with children up to five years old and their parents. And whereas the Save the Children Ambassador Jennifer Gardner had the privilege to accompany Virginia on a couple of home visits in Tipton during which Virginia assessed the developmental health of the child and the well-being of the parents. And whereas by the end of each visit, Virginia managed to transform a silent room into one filled with lively chatter. And whereas what Virginia does so well is strengthen the connection between a mother and her baby and encourage parents to communicate and interact with their children. And whereas Virginia humbly accepted her award on behalf of all the coordinators and staff of her Early Steps to, Early Steps families, she shared that in doing all this work, she could not help but open her heart and let her families in. Now therefore be it resolved that the Tulare County Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim November 2013 as National Family Caregivers Month in Tulare County and encourage all citizens to pay tribute to those who provide for the health and well-being of their family members, friends, and neighbors. That is signed by Alan Ashida, Pete Vanderpool, Phil Cox, Stephen Worthley, and Mike Ennis. Congratulations, Virginia, and thank you. Yeah, you're welcome to say a few words if you would like.
Well, I would like to thank Save the Children for their great organization, but also our Tulare County First Five for being great funders. Of course, my family, my personal family, and my extended family, which is my Tipton community, my parents, Mr. Guerrero and Stacy Benton Court, who are my superintendent and principal of the school. It's just an honor to be honored for doing the job you love to do. You know, it's overwhelming. Thank you very much.
Now we are going to move on to a presentation for item number three. That is a request from the Health and Human Services Agency to designate the month of November 2013 as Adoption Awareness Month in Tulare County. We have a presentation by Mr. John Mauro.
Morning Chairman Vanderpool, members of the board.
Pull that microphone up towards you there.
Okay, better.
Yeah, that's a little better, yep.
Mr. Rousseau, Ms. Bales Lang, my name is John Mauro, and I'm the Division Manager of Child Welfare Services in the Health and Human Services Agency. It's my great pleasure and commemoration of National Adoption Month, which begins later this week, to honor all those foster parents and relatives who adopt foster children in need of permanency in Tulare County. Last fiscal year, the CDS adoption team finalized one hundred and forty-nine adoptions, which significantly exceeded the state standard set for this number of adoption workers, and which also exceeded what they did the previous year by over forty percent, which by the way, also exceeded the state standard. I would like to acknowledge the adoption staff who worked diligently to make this all happen by asking all of them, along with their supervisor Kathleen Trevino, and their lead worker Bob Chavez, to stand up and be recognized. Will you please stand? None of this would be possible without, if it were not for the effort of these fine people. Next, I'm privileged to have two wonderful adoptive couples to address your board. They exemplify adoptive parents and have devoted themselves to children in need. Firstly, I'd like to introduce Drew and Janessa Edmondson. They've been married eight years, have been licensed since December of 2010. They've adopted two children, Destiny and Dylan, who they've had placed with them since 2011. They finalized the adoption for both children in January of this year. They are currently adopting a third child, and they continue to foster. At this time, I'd like to invite Drew and Janessa to address your board.
Our four-year-old.
Dylan.
Two-years-old. Go ahead.
And I won't break the picture.
Nope.
Okay. Okay, good morning, everyone. We are the Edmondsons. I am Drew, this is my wife, Janessa. We would like to thank you for inviting us here to share our family's adoption story. Just a little about us, we are a blended family, and both have daughters, oh, excuse me, daughters from our previous relationships. I have a daughter who is thirty-four, and two grandbabies, a granddaughter and a grandson, whom all reside in Sacramento.
And I have three daughters, ages twenty-one, nineteen, and eighteen. And of course, we've added two through adoption between the two of us, a son and a daughter. We decided to become a family, we decided as a family to become foster parents back in late 2009 and completed our licensing requirements in 2010. We knew we wanted to help, and also knew that if the Lord placed it upon our hearts and opened up the doors to adoption along the way, that we would be open to that as well.
Turns out in 2011, the Lord did just that. We were placed with our now-daughter Destiny in March of 2011, who was at the time aged seventeen months. And then in July 2011, we were placed with our son, our now-son, Dylan, who at the time was a newborn. We were able to spend the first three and a half weeks with him in the NICU, learning how to care for his needs before bringing him home.
By the end of 2011, both of our babies had been transferred to the Adoptions Unit, and we had been named as the Adoptive Resource. We worked with Veronica Castro and her many helpers, including her supervisor Kathleen Trevino, throughout the next year, and officially took adoptive placement in November of 2012. It wasn't much longer until we finalized our adoption and made it official in January of 2013. It was really an amazing day for our entire family.
And I must say, this experience was life-changing for our family in a very positive way. And not a day goes by that we don't thank the Lord for how much that he blessed us with our youngest members of our family, our son Dylan and our daughter Destiny. Growing our family through adoption was such an amazing blessing. Our older children as well as our close extended family members have been a huge support and were with us from the start, supporting us every step of the way. Then there's the social workers, the R18, who helped us along the way, for whom we have so much gratitude for, because they were a little part of our story. We are a adventurous family, and we look forward to the many more fun and exciting years to come with our children grown and small.
Family means everything to us, and having a larger family only means more love to go around. And it also means that no matter what, we always have the chance to hear a little laughter around our home. You know, that's the kind that always melts your heart and makes you smile from your dear. So as we say goodbye to you guys today, we'd like to thank you again for letting us come and share our story with you. It means a lot. We'd also like to add, without giving any identifying information, as John shared with you, that we are currently in the process of growing our family once again through adoption. We were placed early this year with a little one-year-old, who we are working with the lovely and very sweet Ms. Alicia Grandison to complete our adoption and hope to finalize within months. So thank you, guys, and have a very blessed day.
Thank you.
It's now my, my pleasure to introduce the next couple, Jamie and Irene Berninski. They've been married seven years, became licensed in July of 2011, when they took two two-month-old boys into their home, whom they've adopted effective May of this year. They have an open adoption, and at this time, I'd like to invite Jamie and Irene to address your board.
Good morning. These are our two sons, Jeremiah and Josiah, and we've been battling sickness, so we didn't write anything down. So we're just gonna wing it. Our journey to adopt started in a, I guess, in unusual fashion. We, you know, our faith kind of leads us in things that we tend to do, and we got married, and we set a plan and said five years and we would start having kids or trying to have kids. And four years came around, and of course, I was ready, and my husband wasn't, so I did everything to kind of make him ready, like got a little baby dog and constantly babysitting my nephew, and kind of just like forcing kids on him. And we were sitting in church one Sunday morning, and an evangelist came in and was talking about how he was a foster child and how it changed his life, and it kind of touched both of us, and we never kind of brought it up for a couple of weeks, and then a couple of weeks passed, and I said, well, what about foster, fostering a child? You know, my mom had done it, and we never talked about doing it, but what about if we did something like that? And he said, well, you know, I've kind of been thinking about it since that evangelist came in, and why don't, why don't we try it? And I said, well, if we did it now, it would be, let's, let's start it, and let's do it now, and then, you know, if it works out, we'll try to have our own kids. So we started the process and went through the pride classes, which were really a lot of information, a lot of good information, and it was nice to be around a community of people that were wanting the same things as, as us. Once we started the class, we decided we wanted to do foster adopt. So we put in, you know, did all of our, our stuff and got our license, and, you know, we said we didn't have a preference. We would take drug-exposed and, and boy or girl, we kind of just put it in God's hands and said, you know, whatever happens, happens. And of course, my husband kept joking around and saying, I'm praying for twins, I'm praying for twins.
God does have a sense of humor.
And I said, no, no, we're going into this, like, first-time parents, twins? And he's like, yeah, twins, twins. So we got our license, I think, on July the fourth? No, third, third or fifth. And I'm at work, and I'm working hard, and I get a call, and I get a call from the team saying that they had twins. And I'm like, really? Twins? So I call my husband at work, and he's like, oh, my gosh. And I said, yeah, from now on, you're praying for everything, because someone up there is listening to you. Obviously, it's working. So we went and met the boys, and they were in the NICU at the hospital, they were premature.
You need to, you need to back up one little thing.
Okay.
After we got the call, she was like, I just want to meet them, I want to see if I get that feeling. And in my head, I'm like, they're coming home. I know, I know they're coming home, but she's like, I just don't, I want to make sure I get that feeling. And I'm like, I have a picture, her holding these two little babies in the NICU, and I'm like, oh, they're coming home. They're coming home.
Yeah, we went and met them, and I knew right away. I said, you know, I just have these feelings that these are our boys. And there was possible reunification with a family member, and a lot of different things that came up, and, you know, we fell in love with the boys right away, but there was a time that it was possible that they were going to go with another family member. And we had a lot of meetings, and we kind of put our feelings aside and our love for them, and kind of just said, we want what's best for them. You know, we'll be their advocates, and we'll speak the truth and kind of, you know, do the best that we can to get them, but if it doesn't work out, then we've, we've done our best, and we were ready to let go if we had to. But after meetings and a lot of different things and documentation, and just, it ended up working out in our favor, and what needed to happen, happened, and, you know, the adoption became finalized, and they're our sons. We love them so much, and we can't imagine our life without them. And because of the help of everybody at the adoption agency and Tulare County and the services they offered us, and listening to us, and them, they had to see both sides of what was happening, you know, and they listened to us, and they let us speak on the boys' behalf. And, you know, we met a lot with Kathleen, we had Mandy Lewis, who helped us a lot, who came in and really just listened to us, and we had a lot of questions, and we were bugging constantly. And they just always met us with open arms and, and gave us the best counsel and, you know, talked to us, and, and were really, really nice and professional, and, you know, they helped us along the process and, and made everything go smoothly, and everything in the end worked out for the boys, and that was our main concern. So it was finalized in May 17th, and we're as happy as we could be, and I'm telling my husband, if our house was bigger, I probably would adopt more, but I think we're done. Because they're two-years-old, so you can imagine what we go through. But we are headed for our first family trip, we're going to Disney World at the end of the month.
Wow, that's great.
We're brave, we're taking two two-year-olds, but we're taking Grandma with us, so, you know, I can say honestly that we're blessed, and we thank everybody who was involved, and most of all, you know, we just thank the boys, just for, people constantly tell us that you're, you know, the boys are so lucky to have you guys, and we feel like we're lucky to have them. So thank you, guys, for hearing our story, and we appreciate your time. Thank you.
Just make sure your husband doesn't pray too much more, because otherwise, you're going to end up with a few more kids.
Oh, my gosh.
All right, well, I do have a proclamation to present to you. I'd like the Berninskys and the Edmondsons to join me on the front, and I'd also like our Adoptions Team to join me, too. All of our social workers came today, and I really appreciate them coming. So if you guys would all like to join me in the well, that would be wonderful, and I will present this proclamation. And if the Edmondsons and Berninskys would like to join me, too, that would be great up here. All right, great, well, one big family, right? All right, so I'm going to present this proclamation to you, declaring November 2013 as Adoption Awareness Month in Tulare County. Whereas each year, November is recognized nationally as Adoption Awareness Month, and while all adoption-related issues are important, the particular focus of this month is the adoption of children currently in the foster care system. And whereas every child deserves a loving, nurturing, and permanent home, adoption gives children a brighter future, brings joy to the adoptive parents, and places fewer demands on social services. And whereas over four hundred thousand children are in foster care nationwide, and over one hundred thousand are waiting to be adopted, and whereas children waiting for adoptive parents and families who have adopted these children, we require and deserve community and public agency support. And whereas the Tulare County Child Welfare Services Division works diligently to find permanency for foster youth, and whereas more than twelve hundred and fifty adoptions have been finalized by the Tulare County Adoptions Agency in the past ten years, and one hundred and forty-nine adoptions were finalized in fiscal year 2012, 2013, and whereas National Adoption Day will be celebrated in Tulare County on November 19th, 2013, and whereas National Adoption Court Day will be celebrated in Tulare County on November 22nd, 2013, in Tulare County Superior Court, where families will finalize the adoption of their children. And whereas Tulare County is committed to recognizing and honoring those observances that are dedicated to promoting the best ideals of public service, and National Adoption Awareness Month is one such event. Now therefore be it resolved that Tulare County Board of Supervisors do hereby recognize National Adoption Awareness Month and proclaim November 2013 as Adoption Awareness Month in Tulare County, and call upon the citizens, public, and private institutions, businesses, and schools in Tulare County to recommit our community to support the adoption of children of all ages, and encourage Tulare County's families to answer the call by becoming adoptive parents, caring for these children, and ensuring their safety, permanency, and well-being. Signed by Alan Ashida, Pete Vanderpool, Phil Cox, Steve Worthley, and Mike Ennis. We can sure see the difference that you families have made in the lives of these children, and you staff have really made in the lives of these families and children, and you make a tremendous impact for the one hundred and forty-nine families that you have blessed this year, and all of the thousands that you have helped over the last ten. So we thank you for all of your hard work, and we appreciate the dedication, and... So we thank you for all of your hard work and we appreciate the dedication and all the love and caring and personal ownership that goes into doing what you do. And you do a great job and, and these families have sure re-supported that notion. So we thank you very much and I'm happy to present to you this proclamation and we will pause for one large group photo. All right, are there any comments by any of my colleagues? Supervisor?
Yeah, I want to thank the adoptions team. We are on the fast track, I believe, to have, I have a sister-in-law that'll be adopting their fourth child, we're hoping, this year. So we'll, we'll end up with another nephew. So we're, we're very excited to see something like this happen. We, my family and I were foster parents and then we adopted two children and then we've had three of our children also as foster parents. So you guys do a wonderful job. Thank you for what you do.
Supervisor Worley?
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry the Berninskys have left. I, I, I think in many ways, this is my favorite Tuesday that we have every year. I have to keep well hydrated for this. I don't think there's anything more important that we do as a county than this. And for the parents who put themselves out there and taking these children, my personal thanks. It's a wonderful thing we do. Thanks.
Supervisor Ennis?
I would echo that. Thank goodness that we have a team out there that can put these kids and, and get the people that really want to adopt kids and get them together and you can see the results today, so great deal. When I look at those twin boys, I, I, I think of the friends of mine that had twin boys and we used to show cattle together and we called them the Wreckin' Crew, so. You know, thank God there are people that want to take this on. I know if I'd have had a twin brother, I probably wouldn't be here. No, congratulations and so thankful that we have people that want to step up and become adoptive parents and thanks to the team too. Thank you.
All right, this is an action item and the chair will entertain our motion.
A motion to approve.
We have a motion by Supervisor Cox and a second by Supervisor Worley. Please vote. Motion passes four to zero unanimously with Supervisor Ashida not voting because he is not present. Thank you very much for that item and, and thank you again to the team for all that you do. I know that you work really hard and your work can, can really be seen in the difference you're making in all of these lives, so thank you very much. At this time, we will move on to item number four on our agenda and that is public comments. Is there anyone here wishing to address the board on items that are under our jurisdiction but not on the agenda? Public comment can and will be limited to three minutes a speaker and public comment will be entertained at this time. Is there anyone here wishing to speak? There's a lot of people getting up and not walking towards the microphone, so I'm assuming that there is not going to be any public comment today. And I will close the public comment period and I will bring it to the board for Board of Supervisors Matters and we will start today with Supervisor Worley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Today, I'll be leaving after a meeting to go up to Sacramento on behalf of the Tulare County Association of Governments. We have a couple of meetings tomorrow morning with Department of Transportation folks and then I will be staying into the afternoon for a CSAC meeting on part of a group there that is looking at our Williamson Act contracts and the state legislation and will be meeting with them before I return. I guess that's all I had to say. Oh, on last Thursday, the Tulare County Association of Governments had a retreat up in Three Rivers and had an opportunity to dialogue about what are some of the issues that the TCAG might be looking at engaging in in the future. And wish we could have had more participation there. But I think we had a group of county people and city people and, and public representatives, so I think the representative of our, of our county. So I think we'll, you'll hear about some of the results of that meeting and, and their coming meetings with the TCAG.
All right, Supervisor Ennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last Friday, I attended the senior volunteers luncheon out at Knuckles Ranch. That's tied with the Porterville Developmental Center. And between the senior grandparents and the senior volunteers, they put in over 11,000 hours a year. What a, what a great group that is. Also want to, to thank all my eyes and ears out there in the 5th District that continue to give me the coordinators on illegal marijuana farms. We continue to hammer those guys and we want them to know they're not really wanted here. Also this Friday, I'll be attending the First Friday Coffee, which is put on by the, the Porterville Chamber. The United States Marine Corps will be our presenter at that. And last night, we got eight inches of snow at Quaking Aspen, so that's the first of our snowpack. That's all I have. Thank you.
Well, I'm sure glad the Sheriff's Department's doing a great job with marijuana in your area because I'm sending all the people from my area over to yours, so I'm glad they're able to take care of it over there too. All right, good. All right, Supervisor Cox?
Okay, last week was kind of a busy week. I apologize for missing the TCAG retreat. Had two major events last week for the Step Up Event on Wednesday. We had over 250 law enforcement officials attend a training that we sponsored at the Holiday Inn. Very successful event, very good event. The, you know, the feedback was very positive, but 250 attended, which was up a lot from last year. Thursday, while you were at TCAG Supervisor, we had over 400 youth and their advisors attend the Step Up Challenge kickoff at the convention center. We now have 24 schools countywide, 10 high schools and 14 junior high schools participating in service learning projects, again, all over the county. So we look forward to what's coming from there. Every district was very well represented, a good group of kids. And they're not in here, but each of the supervisors received a, a visit this week or the end of last week from superheroes and they were, they're still in their office. So the superheroes were actually the theme of the conference and still will make sure you don't take those home, that we're going to use those at our next event where we have the whole group together in May. Saturday, I was able to attend the Tulare County Office Education Red Ribbon Week event in Tulare. Got there, you know, with about 45 minutes to spare and people were already breaking down, but it was very well attended. I was glad to see our loop bus. I don't know how many we took, but it looked like it was hundreds. As I was driving up, there were three buses completely packed full of people that were leaving, so glad to report to you that our loop bus was a big part of that event as well. Last, I'd like to thank both Allison and Julieta, our staff members here that work for the board. They work very hard. They are very diligent, they're very good about, and, and how they go about doing their business, their commitment to the community is, is to be commended. Without their assistance and without their help, we wouldn't be able to, I think, get maybe half of the things done we're able to do as a board. So I wanted to publicly thank both of those. We also have Brenda, who's interning with us here, who was a big part of both of those events last week as well, so I want to thank her. So again, without, you know, the help of these folks that work directly with us, things just wouldn't get done, so I want to thank them.
All right, real quick, I just wanted to go over an upcoming event for everyone to attend and help them raise money and that's the Young Farmers and Ranchers Group of the Tulare County Farm Bureau. They're going to be having an event this Saturday at the Heritage Complex in Tulare. Should be a great event, be very well attended and will hopefully raise money for their program in preserving the lifestyle of young farmers and ranchers as it is very much a generational thing and it's good to see young folks. I guess I consider myself one of them to get involved and to, to really get pumped up about agriculture as we know that is literally our bread and butter here in Tulare County. Well, it's under 40, so I've still got a little ways to go, but anyway, so that's all I had for Board of Supervisors Matters and we will now take up the consent calendar. Items number eight and nine will be pulled for separate consideration. Are there any additional items that members of the board or members of the public would like to have pulled? Okay, seeing none, chair will entertain, entertain a motion on the balance of consent calendar.
Yeah, I'd move for approval, consent calendar, less items, eight and nine for separate.
Second, thank you. And we have a motion by Supervisor Ennis, a second by Supervisor Cox. Please vote. Motion passes unanimously, four to zero with Supervisor Ashida not voting because he is not present. We will now take up item number eight. Debbie?
Good morning. Debbie Vaughn, County Administrative Office. Item number eight is with regard to the high-speed rail. The, as you guys are aware, the first phase of construction is between Fresno and Bakersfield and is about 130 miles. Your board has on numerous occasions, both in writing and verbally expressed opposition to the high-speed rail on various grounds. Some of the concerns that you've raised have been the loss of ag land, the, the impact of the line in terms of bisecting farm operations and the loss of valuable transportation quarters, particularly impacting a lot of the farm and ag operations within the community. Currently, the proposed, excuse me, preferred alignment has the potential to severely impact some businesses along its path. That path is west of Hanford and one example of that is PFFJ, which is a wholly-owned subsidiary of Hormel Farms. They operate on 420 acres and the proposal of their alignment goes directly down the middle of their operations and also includes two overpasses, one at Avenue 112 and one at Avenue 120 for Highway 43. The 120 overpass, as proposed, will take the land that they currently use for their hog effluent process. The 120 overpass has the potential, one, to separate them from their feed mill operations, which are critically important because they use that feed both in their operations and to provide feed to other users within the valley. And significantly, it also has access to a rail line right now. And the way that those overpasses are constructed, they will, on 112, they have the potential to lose access completely to their feed mill. If it does still allow them access, there's a great deal of concern that they'll lose access to the rail line. So that completely eliminates the viability of that feed mill to support their operations. On the 120 side to the north or to south of that, excuse me, that will take away their land, as I mentioned, that they use in, as part of their production process. The operation has had conversations with the high-speed rail, the regional director. They've had meetings, they've had discussions. Additionally, our resource management agency has had discussions with the consultants working for high-speed rail and they have considered a couple, or discussed a couple of alternatives for the 120 overpass. So those decisions are as yet unresolved and obviously, the operation has a great deal of concern. They're going to completely lose their ability to function in that area. And I think that one of the things that needs to be recognized is that you can't simply replace that land. The land that they're using for the effluent now requires an extensive permitting process and there is not any land currently adjacent to their property that they could purchase for that use. Additionally, the feed mill, you know, is a huge operation, would be very expensive to relocate and there is no guarantee that if they relocated in another location, they could still have the rail line access that they have right now. So unfortunately, it's a really good example of what your board has expressed concerns on in numerous, numerous occasions. This operation employs 43 people. It generates $100,000 in property taxes, has an annual payroll of $1 million. It's a significant contributor to agricultural production within the county and, and the high-speed rail will literally bisect it in half. So this is an example of a situation, but as your board has noted, there's probably many other situations that are very similar up and down that alignment that would have the ability to impact. So the letter before you is simply a request, one, that the alignment be modified so that it does not have this kind of direct impact to farm businesses or agricultural businesses along its pathway. If the High-Speed Rail Authority is unwilling to make that modification, then what the letter requests is that operations such as this one be fully compensated for the loss of their business viability. And that doesn't just include purchasing that land. That includes either relocating them and helping them to get all the necessary permits and access that they need to continue to operate, you know, or compensating them for the future loss of business revenue that will happen as a result of that take. So that's what's before you. Any questions?
Thank you, Debbie. I do know that Jennifer Hansen is, is here as well from PFFJ and I did speak with her and offered the opportunity to cover anything that Debbie didn't cover in her comments just about these impacts. So Jennifer?
Good morning and thank you for allowing me this opportunity. Debbie did a really good job of summarizing the facts, so I don't think I need to do that so much as just say that I'm really here for our employees. You know, we're in western Tulare County. Of course, we know the unemployment rate's really high there and we have 43 employees that work there full-time, year-round with benefits. I've been there 25 years and most of the employees have been there that long as well. I mean, we have, I bet our average 10 years, 20 years. So I'm really here for those guys, you know, it's important to them, you know, they're raising their families all over Tulare County. And, and, and this high-speed rail is likely to demolish our business if it goes through. So, you know, little things first and if we can get rid of this overpass on Avenue 120, that would greatly help us. We see projected overpasses every mile, so from our perspective, this overpass seems a little excessive as well. And, and again, it's really just about maintaining that business. It's been there a long time and, and keeping our employees, you know, in jobs, full-time, year-round with benefits. And by the way, I do live in Springville.
Oh.
And travel to western Tulare County every morning and, and we have, we have lots of people that live all over the county.
That's great. Thank you very much, Jennifer. Appreciate your comments. And we, we may not be able to completely eliminate all overpasses, but we can work on the alignment of the overpasses and definitely be an advocate for the best and least impactful alignment of those passes.
I appreciate, I appreciate the support.
Supervisor Worley?
Mr. Chairman, I thank you. I sort of supported the letter. I, I honestly think that, that in the event that they proceed with this, that, that all these things that are being claimed, owners would be entitled to. I mean, we, we had that conversation, I remember, we had a particular, particular project that impacted a dairy to the point, I believe it was on 198, that we actually had to buy the dairy because, again, you have to have a viable entity left over. If you, you can't just get by purchasing the right-of-way. If it has an impact on the business, you have the right to recover all of that. But as is pointed out, that goes, accrues to the benefit of the owner of the business perhaps and it's like a one-time money, but then as far as ongoing business, ongoing employment, those are things that don't necessarily come out of this. And sometimes people walk away with a satchel full of money, but then that's the end of the business and so that, that is a, a major concern. I think it also reflects on the cost of this project and why this is such a foolish project in terms of the cost. The, I'm talking about the high-speed rail. Imagine what it will cost to, to purchase this business when you add up all of the value that is there and you say, you know, when you look at buying up right-of-way, buying it right-of-way means buying up all these expenses and this will be multiplied over and over again throughout the state. And so we support the letter. I, I apologize in advance that, that our ability to control the state is, is very limited and we have And we have a governor who, for whatever reason, is, is fixated on the construction of this High Speed Rail. And I don't understand it in so many ways. He's a fiscal type of conservative, and yet in this thing, it's like he is totally blinded. But we will continue, as a county and as individual board members, I'm sure, to try to do what we can to prevent this thing from happening. But there again, it's, it's oftentimes beyond our control.
Right.
Supervisor Ennis?
Yeah, this is really, I think, just, one, this is just the tip of the iceberg from all the people that are going to be affected by this High Speed Rail. We knew early on, these great separations aren't cheap either. I mean, these are millions and billions of dollars, plus all the right-of-way they have to buy. But in this case, you've got, you've got a business that just can't, we can't just move over here because of all the hoops they've had to jump through with all the different agencies that give them a permit. So, like I say, this is just one of the tips of the iceberg, and we'll continue to work for the efforts of the people of not only Tulare, but Kings County, in seeing if we can help these businesses move forward. I don't, you know, to me, it's just, it's a luxury we don't need at this time. We don't need a High Speed Rail right now. We need water. We need other things in California. But it just seems like that, like Supervisor Worthy was saying, this governor's ministration has just been on trying to get this thing built. But we feel your concerns, and thus why we're, we're backing you on this thing. I'm so sorry that it's going to create such a problem for everybody, and maybe the loss of jobs for Tulare County and everybody around us. So, our sympathy goes out to you, but we wish we could do more.
Well, baby steps. This is definitely helpful.
All right. Well, thank you very much. I think, and we appreciate your comments. And I think that the direction is very clear from this board, that we will continue to advocate on your behalf and on the other businesses in Tulare County, like yourself and in Kings County, that are going to be drastically impacted by this project. So, Chair will entertain a motion at this time.
Move for approval.
A motion by Supervisor Ennis, a second by Supervisor Worthy. Please vote. Motion passes unanimously, unless Supervisor Ashida, who is not in attendance at today's meeting, cannot vote. Thank you very much. We will now move on to item number nine. This item is set for closed session, and I believe council has suggested need for a closed session at this time before we vote on this item. Is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and you have items, I believe it's B through F on your board's closed session agenda on this matter.
Okay, at this time, the board will adjourn to a brief closed session, and we will return shortly. All right, we are back in session. My apologies for taking a little bit long. Some of my colleagues like to talk longer than other, I'm kidding. That was, we had to discuss some legal issues surrounding the leasing of property, and we are now back in session, still taking up Consent Calendar item number nine. I will entertain comment and direction from the board.
Well, I would, I would make the motion, but we, we do need this, this property, this space for the present time, because of the people we need to support the courthouse. So, I am in agreement with it. You know, we naturally, we'd love to have a place that we could just buy, because these aren't subvented rents, but for the time being, a two-year lease on this will give us time to either look at this or something else down the road. So, I would make a motion for approval.
Okay, great. We have a motion by Supervisor Ennis, a second by Supervisor Worthy. All those in favor, please vote, and opposed, too. Motion passes unanimously, four to zero, with Supervisor Ashida not voting, because he is not present. That item passes. We are now going to move on to our untimed portion of our meeting agenda and take up item number 24. It's a request from Capital Projects and Facilities to deny the bid protest filed by Lee's Paving, Inc. Mr. Phipps?
Good morning. Ted Phipps, Capital Projects and Facilities Manager. Before your board this morning is the long-awaited request to award the Harmon Field Low-Temperature Thermal Disorption Soil Remediation Project. And yes, that is a mouthful.
Why had you read it?
Tulare County-owned Harmon Field is a former airport located at 1494 South Airport Road, Pixie, California. The site encompasses approximately 40 acres on a 104-acre parcel. The airport was used as a base for crop duster activity from 1952 until 1994. The airport was closed in 1994. In 1985, Harmon Field was placed on the State Priority Ranking List, a ranking of hazardous waste sites, also known as the Superfund List, by the former State Department of Health Services, now known as the Department of Toxic Substances Control, DTSC. Jim Waters, Tulare County Health and Human Services Environmental Quality Division, has been conducting site investigations under the oversight of DTSC and the Regional Water Quality Control Board since 1985. After identifying and evaluating possible remedies, a process called Low-Temperature Thermal Disorption was selected as the most feasible method to remediate soil at this site. This method uses heat to separate pesticides from the soil. The contaminants released from the soil would then be captured in carbon filters and sent to an off-site disposal facility. The remediated soil would then be returned back to its original site. This process significantly reduces the amount of material and cost required to be sent to an off-site disposal facility. On-site vaulting and capping of the contaminated asphalt from the runway and taxiways was selected as the most feasible method to remediate the contaminated asphalt. An on-site vault will be excavated in a clean, isolated area of the site, and the contaminated asphalt will be placed in the vault. A cap will be placed over it to protect and isolate the buried contaminated asphalt. As required, Tulare County will enter into an operation and maintenance agreement with California EPA following the completion of the work. This agreement will stay in effect for the life of the site, for yearly inspections, and any recommended work will need to be performed to ensure the integrity of the vault. All sequel requirements have been completed. Community outreach has included updates to the Pixie Town Council, distribution of a DTSC fact sheet to surrounding landowners, and community meetings. The contract documents provide four to six months for the successful contractor to obtain the required permits from the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District. Following the receipt of the permits, 180 calendar days are allowed for the completion of the project, and the estimated completion date would be fall of 2014. Project oversight will be performed by the geologist of record, James Babcock of Arcadus. Project management will be performed by Tulare County Capital Projects. Bids from two firms were received and opened on September 19, 2013, and a recap of those bids are as follows. Pacific State's environmental contractors provided a bid for $3,681,034. Lee's Paving Incorporated provided a bid of $6,826,690. The engineer's estimate was $3.8 million. Following the bid opening, a protest letter was filed by Lee's Paving Incorporated on October 3, 2013. A copy of the protest letter and all correspondence was provided in your packets. The protest letter had two separate protest points listed. Point one is in reference to the listing of California Environmental Company as being the thermal contractor on the subcontractor's list. Point two is in reference to the environmental, to the equipment being supplied by California Environmental Company as not being able to meet specifications of the project. Tulare County Capital Projects initiated a review of these points and came to the following conclusions. Point one, Pacific State's environmental contractors have supplied sufficient written response to clarify their intent in listing California Environmental Company on their subcontractor's list was only to show them as a major component supplier to the project. Pacific State's has also provided written documentation that their own personnel will operate that equipment. They have provided sufficient documentation to their experience as required in Section 100 Instruction to Bidders. In Section 100 Instructions to Bidders, page three, item I states that the owner reserves the sole discretion to reject any or all bids or to waive informalities and irregularities in the bid form or the bid process. Also in that same section, item M states, "The decision of the owner regarding the amount of a bid or existence or treatment of a discrepancy in a bid will be final." Point two, Pacific State's Environmental Contractors Incorporated has provided appropriate documentation of their understanding and the requirement to meet the 40-ton-per-hour specification as listed in Section 13100, Art 2, 2.2, in discussion of the disorption chamber. All specifications as listed in the bid specification will be required to be met, and Pacific State's has provided sufficient documentation that they can meet the specification, and the equipment that they will be supplied by California Environmental Company will meet the requirements of the airboard. An independent quote "provided by California Environmental Company to Lee's Paving" is insufficient evidence to prove Pacific State's environmental contractors cannot meet this requirement. After review and research of the two points of protest in Lee's Paving Incorporated's letter dated October 3, 2013, the information provided is either insufficient or unsubstantiated for the County of Tulare Capital Projects to find Pacific State's environmental contractors as a non-responsive bidder. A letter was sent to Lee's Paving Incorporated on October 15, informing them of the County of Tulare Capital Projects' decision of not finding Pacific State's environmental contractors non-responsive. The letter also stated that Tulare County Capital Projects would be making the recommendation to the Board of Supervisors for the award of this project to Pacific State's environmental contractors on October 29, 2013. Therefore, staff's recommendation is that your board deny the bid protest filed by Lee's Paving Incorporated, award the contract for the Tulare County Harmon Field Low-Temperature Thermal Disorption Soil Remediation Project to the lowest responsible bidder, Pacific State's environmental contractors, in the amount of $3,681,034, approve the necessary budget adjustments, and authorize the chairman to sign the construction agreement upon receipt of certificates of insurance and bonds subject to review and approval as deformed by county council. Are there any questions from your board this morning?
Any questions from board members? Supervisor Cox?
There's one of the concerns with the capacity of the equipment. Do we have liquidated damages built into the contract?
Yes, sir.
So, if they don't complete the work within the 180 days, LDs apply?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions from board members?
Do we have an engineer's estimate of the cost of this project?
$3.8 million.
Okay. Any other questions from board members? All right, at this time, I will open it up for public comment. A public comment can and will be limited to three minutes. Is there anyone here wishing to speak to this item? Okay, seeing no one, I'll close the public comment period and bring it back to the board for action.
Move for approval.
All right, we have a motion by Supervisor Ennis?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Cox. Please vote. Motion passes unanimously, four to zero, with Supervisor Ashida not voting, because he is not present.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ted. Now, we are going to move on to item number 25. That is a request from Solid Waste Department to receive a report from Blue Ridge Services on landfill operations. We do have a request to continue this item, and it will be continued to November 3, I believe. Oh, I'm sorry, December 3. But is there anyone here wishing to speak to this item that made this long journey to come to the board meeting today? If so, I will entertain any comments from you, and if not, we will postpone this item until December 3. Okay, seeing no one, do we have, do we need to vote for that item, or are we just going to bring it back? Okay, that item will be brought back December 3. That concludes our open session agenda today. Counsel, do we have remaining need for closed session?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, you do. You have items A through J listed on your board's closed session agenda. I do not anticipate any announcement.
All right. Thank you for attending today's board meeting, and everyone have a wonderful week.
No, I don't think so. I don't know what we need to announce.